Okay, I want to call this meeting in order of the special city council meeting, adjourned meeting, the city council, excuse me, with good terms. And I know that Councilmember Tennyce Johnson is running a couple of minutes late. So right now it's just us the four of us and then Councilmember Johnson will be joining us eventually. And we're going to have a workshop on the police department update and chief, it's all yours.
All right. Good evening, members of council, members of city staff, city manager star. It's my pleasure tonight to give about a half hour presentation or a little bit less with some time for some questions on the police department update, not only on some of our crime stats and numbers, but also going to transition into where we've come in the last 10 or 11 months from position we were in back in May of 2022 until where we are now. So I'll wait a minute till we can pull this up. Again, I'm, for those that may be listening online or those that may be in the audience, I'm Chief Jason Reed with Montclair Police Department. I was appointed acting chief in May of 2023 and promoted to full-time police chief January 1st, 2024. As you can see, our beautiful building there, built in '08, we still work out that building, of course, and I'll get right into it. My first slide is just a little, a small snapshot of our command structure at the PD. For those that may not understand who, when they hear the term command staff, we have myself as the chief, Brian Ventura, who's a newly appointed captain, and three lieutenants, Brandon Kynmansky, James Michael, and Michael Zur, who we'll be introducing tonight. I want to start the presentation with some general statistics. Again, this isn't a crime analysis, I just want to get some general numbers out there.
We're not getting audio through Zoom?
Okay.
Adjust it real quick.
Okay, I'll pause. Yes, testing, testing? Again, sorry for those that couldn't hear on Zoom briefly, I'm Chief Jason Reed, Montclair Police Department, and I'm here to, I'm happy to present a police department update, not only for some general statistics and some crime statistics, but also discuss the direction that we're going with recruitment and retention and the progress we've made thus far. So I'll start with some general statistics. Yeah, now this isn't working. We'll have to wait for a minute for the, there we go. Between 2023 and 2024? Yes, any questions?
Whatever happened to overhead projectors?
Sometimes no statistics are good statistics. Oh, yes. Is this thing dead, baby? Okay, some general statistics for Montclair PD. Total calls for service between '23 and '24, we handled 45,072 calls for service. We received many more calls at our dispatch center than that, sometimes multiple calls for one event, however, that's a generally how many times an officer was dispatched, self-initiated, responded to a call for service during that timeframe. During that timeframe, traffic citations issued 1,784. We handled 6,127 police reports that we documented. A very small, a smaller percentage of those are online reporting, but it still requires, you know, the, we offer that service to the community, however, it still requires some work on the backend, some follow-up and investigation RN, so. Parking citations, 6,896 parking citations were issued during that timeframe. Little trouble clicking forward here. Some general crime statistics in 2023, I have a small asterisk there as some stats are still accumulating. These are general stats up to about September and October of last year, however, the numbers should be pretty similar to this. Zero hate crimes were happy to report. Officers injured and assaulted 36 last, during 2023, which was up 19 from 2022. Reproductive rights crimes, of course, at zero. Auto burglaries, aggravated assaults, four homicides, robberies are at 12. Now, remember robberies are, can be also a store being, an act of force or fear to take property from a store, could be someone on the street that someone comes up to, so it's not just a commercial robbery that you're looking at. Larceny at 652, burglary 277. The difference between burglary and larceny is burglary is entering a dwelling with the, with the intent of committing grand theft or petty theft or any other felony. So sometimes burglary doesn't mean just someone's house getting broken into, it can be someone going into an open business, committing a burglary and leaving. Arson at 19 cases. That may sound alarming, and of course it always is, but also counted as arson's are sometimes unhoused individuals will start a fire or a dumpster fire or something like that, so this is, these aren't usually structures, it's very few and far between that we get a structured fire from an arson. Getting a delay on this, I'm sorry. MPD grant management, we utilize multiple grant opportunities and asset seizure opportunities. I didn't want to list them all up here, it would be hard to see, 26 grant projects, but I'll talk a little bit about what we've utilized asset seizure for during the year. Officer cellular phones, firearms and a range upgrade, which I'll speak of a little bit more later on. Recruitment website, which I'll definitely talk about, staccato firearms, holsters for our firearms, crash data retrieval, computer systems, ballistic helmets, flock cameras and a server upgrade that IT is working on for the PD. We have multiple grant projects, as you see, the font would be too small, but I will cover some of the major ones. We have a bulletproof vest grant that we currently operate. We receive grant funding for AEDs for all of our police cars. Body worn camera, which is a big one, $800,000 receipt of funds for body worn cameras, which we now have in our possession and we're in the process of rolling out in the next couple of weeks. We've upgraded our emergency operations center utilizing all grant funding from new computers to monitors, online Zoom capabilities and some backend software. Again, another IT, major IT project that was completed. And our EOC is also used to host community events and training courses that we host here at the police department as well, so that was a nice upgrade. We received grant funding through the Bureau of Community and Corrections for officer wellness. We have a fund of, funds that we can use directly towards officer wellness, training programs and equipment, and we're happy to receive those funds as well. Spike strips, breaching tools, e-bikes. We've received some funds to reimburse the city for some neighbors' compliance on our CAD system, radio control heads, the list goes on and on. So it's nice that we're able to service and utilize these grant funding so that the funds can be used other portions, parts of the city, and we can still have all of these services and equipment and tools used at the police department. And again, I apologize if there's a little bit of delay. What's going on with that thing?
Move the mouse.
I'll, I'll wait, I'm sorry. Some of the crimes, some of the major crimes and the crimes most noticeable I'll speak about, grand theft auto and wanted vehicles in Montclair. As council and staff is aware, we have 60 flock cameras mounted in multiple areas in our city. They're not enforcement cameras, they only capture license plate and vehicle description information, they alert officers to wanted or stolen vehicles in the area. These tools have been paramount in our ability to interrupt, disrupt crime and arrests very violent felons and people have committed some major crimes in the city.
I have to use the mouse?
Yes, can I, can I, okay. Okay, next slide. Flock cameras have assisted in the investigation of, like I stated, numerous violent crimes, not only that occurred in Montclair, but suspects who commit crimes in other areas and travel through the city. They've range for murder, assault with a deadly weapon, burglary, high-level theft suspects. Next slide, please. Just in January 2023 to March of 2024, Montclair PD officers arrested 78 suspected, or subjects driving stolen vehicles and returned those vehicles to their rightful owners. And we've recovered numerous other vehicles parked or otherwise we were unable to capture the people driving them. And again, that doesn't mean that all of these vehicles were stolen in Montclair, but people do drive through our city and these cameras pick them up, and it initiates several officers to respond when available to handle these types of calls. And these people sometimes don't willingly give up, you know, so there's been, sometimes we've had to pursue them, so again, that's why we pursue some of this equipment like spike strips and things like that to end these types of situations. Next, please. Another crime, of course, is highly visible and very noticeable in Montclair, and it goes, it waxes and wanes, it goes through a lot of ups and downs as graffiti and vandalism. There's multiple, sometimes we get asked, what's the motivations behind vandalism can relate, and graffiti, it ranges from gang relations, tagging crews, artwork sometimes. Sometimes vandalism occurs from mental illness, attempted burglaries and theft, sometimes someone will break a window maybe to test an alarm, or just drives by a business they had a problem with earlier that day and wants to vandalize it. Domestic violence incidents, of course, and delinquency, general delinquency is, are some motivating factors for this. Next. Combating graffiti and vandalism. 2023 to the present, we've arrested approximately 69 subjects for vandalism and graffiti. Sometimes we've caught people that have committed multiple acts of graffiti and due to our software that we'll talk about in a second, and some of the technology that we have, we're able to go back and find earlier vandalisms and taggings that they've done and put them into custody. So along with help from our IT division and public works, we utilize multiple tools to document track and ensure timely removal of graffiti, of course, keeping prosecution abilities intact. There's multiple cameras throughout the city and trans center that our dispatch monitors that IT has placed. I have a sample of an image we captured from one of them. And of course, we also utilize online investigation techniques that are read, delete, arresting convictions, whether it be through social media, someone bragging about something, someone actually filming their crime, and there's multiple techniques and that we utilize to combat this unfortunate problem. Next slide, please. One of the major factors and one of the major teams that we are currently testing for to bring back into service is our special enforcement team or SET team. We are in the middle of recruitment for it, it's occurring as we speak. Our plan is, of course, with all of the new positions that we've been able to hire, once these people start getting out of training and on their own, we plan on placing two officers and a sergeant on that team immediately with up to four officers later in 2024. It'll be a functioning special operations team. Highly effective, problem-oriented team handles a multitude of miscreants, high-profile apprehensions of wanted subjects, crime prevention, undercover operations, community meetings, outreach, of course graffiti. This is a team to explain it with the time constraint I have is, it's officers out driving on patrol, they have to handle all types of calls, emergencies and everything else. Sometimes they don't have the time or the ability to track one person down, where if one person commits some type of crime, the SET team would be able to take that crime and run with it, go find the person, find others involved, track down, especially in graffiti cases, prior arrests, or the moniker that was used somewhere, and they're able to do all this work as a full-time team, and it doesn't take away from our patrol 911 service for that officer driving around in the black and white. So, and they also, so they do a myriad of investigations, and we're happy to announce that team's returning quickly here. Next slide, please. I posted a picture, this is a trans center image, it's just one example of the high-quality cameras that we've placed up, these individuals are tagging, although they may have, they may be covering their faces or wearing clothing. Obviously, there's some great documentation there, if we were to see these people walking down the street with that same outfit on, it would give us more probable cause to stop those people and identify. Or, you know, in the future, that's a great image, we're going to great lengths to secure the trans center. If this person committed tagging somewhere else and they use the same type of artwork, our software will detect that and be able to place them on more than just this one incident. So next slide, please. Traffic safety and enforcement is always a priority for Montclair. Go ahead, our traffic statistics, this is for 2022, and it's because the figures that we're utilizing from 2022 are to submit for our Office of Traffic Safety Grant, which I'll discuss here shortly. So in 2022, fatal collisions, we had 10. Five were DUI-related, three are hit and run-related, so half of the collisions are related to DUI. I did pull a number, 2023, we were down to six, which is still not good, but it's a, it's a slightly better scenario than we, than we see here. Briefly, injury collisions 29, DUI collisions 35, hit and run 29, and of course, as mentioned earlier, 1,784 nos to appear citations, 6,800 parking, but we have to utilize tools outside of our normal patrol force to fight these types of issues, so. Primary collision factors, we've determined that when we, when we submit for a grant for Office of Traffic Safety, they want to know the primary collision factors that cause these collisions, and that way they, we can gear our enforcement towards combating these issues. The main three, 22, 107, unsafe turning movement, one fatal injury, or one fatal collision, 124 injury collisions with 155 total people injured just from unsafe turning movements, 22, 350, which is speeding or unsafe speed, 100 injury accidents due to that being the primary collision factor, and 140 people injured. And DUI, of course, six fatal injuries, 65 injury collisions, 90 people injured. And again, the primary collision factor means when we take a collision report, that is the, we have to identify which vehicle code section caused the collision. So those three are our main problem violations right now, so next. The Office of Traffic Safety Grant, which we are utilizing and we are hoping to start, which we will be starting October 1st, they identify several operations and we speak with OTS on operations that we would like to commit to combat these issues, so we're not combating them blindly. We know what the primary collision factors, we know what our issues are. So going through briefly through these bullet points throughout the OTS, we'll participate in multiple traffic and impaired enforcement details, and beginning in October for a one-year performance plan, we'll develop and maintain a be on the lookout program for DUI suspension or problem drivers. We'll send at least 10 officers to field sobriety test training, which is a post-course, 16-hour, and drug recognition training. We'll conduct at least two DUI checkpoints, DUI saturation patrols four times. Four of those minimum DUI warrant services for people who, whose licenses have been suspended and they have active warrants for DUI-related hit and runs or crashes or crimes. Primary collision factor violation saturations for those three PCFs that we talked about earlier. Four of those, distracted driving for telephone, electronic devices or whatever, any other distractions that you might have in your vehicle, texting. Motorcycle safety operation saturations, clicker tickets with seatbelt violation, pedestrian and bicycle traffic safety saturations, two of those. DUI checkpoint training for our supervisors that actually set up the DUI checkpoints, there's many laws and rules and regulations they have to follow, so it's a training that's provided for that. And also, a big one is street racing, which we know, and sideshow enforcement. The intersection takeovers, the circular donut skid marks that you see, we'll have some programs that, and some saturation patrols and some enforcement for that. And again, these are all funded by Office of Traffic Safety. These are in addition to our normal patrol activities out there, so we'll still be out there making DUI RS, writing tickets, but these are all, the officer's time, overtime, salary, equipment used and everything is provided for in this grant. So next. So that brings us, and that brings us to our timeline, which is the second half of my presentation, of March 2023 till present date. Multiple, Montclair PD, like multiple law enforcement agencies nationwide, we face a staffing shortage across multiple divisions in the department for a variety of reasons. The variety of reasons why were outlined in our, in our signing bonus agenda, it's a very well-written agenda by the City Manager Star, which outlines the reasoning behind staffing shortages that exist here statewide, nationwide, but our issue was dealing with it and moving forward and how to correct it on our end. We had police officer vacancies, dispatch records and cadet vacancies were some of the main ones. Next slide, please. The Montclair Hiring Incentive Program, discussions at the, you know, between us, city manager, at the PD, everything else began early 2023 on strategies to recruit, recruit and retain police officers. We experienced a decline in qualified applicants for police officer positions for recruit and laterals. For purposes of this presentation, a lateral is anyone who's already a police officer at another agency and they hold a one year, with one year experience, so that's the term lateral. At the beginning of the discussion, we faced 14 police officer vacancies, and not to mention those who might be on leave, different leaves, paternity leave, maternity leave, military leave, so we were faced with, we had quite a task in front of us. We recognized an experience gap in our agency between brand-new officers and experienced officers. There was a large gap created because of the vacancies on officers that had some tenure and experience and training. We established a hiring incentive program. It's a productive approach to increase the police officer hiring pool, especially for experienced lateral police officers. Benefits of hiring post-basic certified lateral officers, I touched on it briefly, but you bring an officer to the Montclair PD, as you see when we introduce new officers, we'll be introducing one tonight. They don't need to go through an entire field training program if they're a lateral officer. They don't need, we don't need to place that person through an academy, and when they come out on the street, they bring all of the experience that they brought from their other agency and training, and their training is highly abbreviated. It's still quality training, it's geared towards how much training that one person will need, but you go down to about a seven to eight week training program, riding in a car with another officer until they're out on their own, as opposed to 24 or so weeks from the, someone that's right out of the academy, that's, that's not a lateral officer. So it's a huge benefit for us to get people on the street quickly. The importance of the referral program for the, we also established a referral program in that hiring bonus and incentive, and that's a financial award for members of the city who recruit an officer for us, give us a name, and that person passes probation. That's been a huge tool. I will say that also, people are referring also people for other positions other than police officers, so it's not just that incentive that's the motivation for some of these members. We're getting several, several of the people we're interviewing for our professional staff, they're stating, well, so-and-so referred me because they want me to come work here, or I know, so, so we're happy to report that as well. We also want to highlight the importance also, the incentive hiring bonus program was $10,000 for entry-level officers, which is still important because we still want to send people through the academy, and there's still a large pool of people, if you, aside from laterals, that, we have two people in the academy right now, one graduating this Thursday. He was a, he was a explorer for us in the cadet, so it is important to also have that as a backup plan, but it is also important to get lateral officers here as well. August 7th, 2023, with 14 vacancies and a stall in interested applicants, the hiring bonus program was approved by the city and implemented. Knowing that we were going to have to do a little more than just depend on this program, we strategized at the, at the police department as well to ensure this program was successful. We had multiple conversations with labor groups, employees, informal and formal conversations, meetings, spoke with other agencies, everything you could imagine on how we could attract and retain people. We, we worked on morale increase measures with the change of leadership at the police department, we brought in some, backed some swearing-in ceremonies with family members. It's important, families are happy, employees are happy, so it's important they, to show up, for them to show up to these things. We brought back award recognitions, potlucks, barbecues, volunteer appreciation luncheon, which some of you were able to attend. We made sure our meetings were geared towards increasing morale at the police department. Working condition updates, of course, we have great working conditions here, but we worked on some things that were little to no cost that people were looking for. When we talk to people that say, if you just had this, or do you guys have that, or do you allow this, tattoos, et cetera, so as you all know, we did approve some alternative policies. Uniform updates with some more modern equipment that we allow to use, it's more comfortable. Personal appearance standards updates, tattoo body art standard updates, some modern equipment updates, so. Cellular phone project, we talked a little bit about that, it was important that officers have cell phones so they can be more efficient in their duties, use it as a camera, call people who call us from the field rather than waiting the time to drive their house sometimes. The body worn camera project, which we talked about, the, we upgraded our range, new helmet acquisition, we had some really old helmets that still worked, but they were heavy, they were bulky. Equipment is important when someone's looking at coming to work here, so they do look at these things, so. Next slide, please. We brought back internal transparent staff meetings at the PD, we shared our notes, the entire department, so people were in the loop on what was going on. With those communications, the shift in excitement for the future, the PD members are willing to keep working for us as long as we're working on our recruitment efforts, which we, which we were working hard on, so. Slide. I did a snapshot, I wanted to show a little bit of the website, but for interest of time, I encourage anyone to go view our website that we established. Again, this was part of our strategy is, sometimes just word of mouth that only goes so far, it's nice to meet someone in the field and say, go to this website, it'll tell you everything, it'll show you what we look like, what we dress like, the uniforms, the equipment we have, and it clicks away from getting in touch with the background investigator. So our staff worked very hard in getting this put together, I will warn you, if you click on there, you'll probably join the PD, you'll probably submit an application, so be careful with that, but please, please check it out. Next slide. I included some photos, and you can kind of, you can kind of go through these, Andrea, just some photos, some professional photography they provided for us on the, on the website, and keep going, it shows us, you know, shows our professional staff, our dispatch supervisor, Brenda there, our gym. A lot of people are very impressed by the gym and the workout, and they can see the decorations on the wall and things like that, so that went a long way. The website has been a huge success for us so far, and like I said, it's a one-stop-shop for someone. Within seconds, you're clicking on and it takes you right over to the application process, so. Our firearm project, we have, we approved approval from the city council, and we increased our, or we updated our firearm platform to a high-end staccato nine millimeter, also with a lighting improvement attached to the firearm and an optic system. It's very successful improving our performance, we're seeing huge gains in it already in performance at the range, confidence. There's also been studies committed by the, or conducted by the DA's office in the success of optics in law enforcement, in the unfortunate event where a firearm has to be discharged. The optics that we have obtained for the firearm have proven to, with better results for accuracy, less shots being fired, things like that, in the unfortunate event of a shooting. And it's also been a huge recruitment and retention tool for the PD. People think, wow, you guys have this, these high-end equipment in this firearm, you guys must be serious. So we've, in talking to people, it's really one of the main reasons as well, that it's just another reason why they're turning in their applications for us, so. We know about the armored vehicle, I'll touch on it quickly, it was funded, it was again funded through, grant funding through the county, so it's used as a community outreach tool especially, but obviously officer and occupant safety, next slide, please. So that's our new Bearcat compared to our 1980 Peacekeeper that we once had, it's a, it's a huge upgrade, so keep going through that, there's another photo of it taken by the website. There's a picture of our old one just for reference, it was a great vehicle, but it's 50 years old almost, so it's time to be replaced. We aggressively advertised social media campaign, if you don't follow us, you should, Instagram, Facebook, we direct it, we were able to get some professional, professionally created ads, we highlighted, of course, the bonus program, but not just the bonus program, we showed what we're like as people, the fun things we do, the everyday interactions, some fun statements, some serious stuff, so there's a little bit of everything on there. Word of mouth spread, we actually posted for sergeants and motor officers on there. This is also within referrals from our own employees. And again, aggressive work by our recruitment and background team, we had unforeseen amount of backgrounds come in and investigations be conducted as a result of this. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Doesn't that look good? That looks good. We placed some of these ads, and you can go to the next one. Highlighting the hiring bonus, this is another one, for this was for a sergeant's position we recently tested for. Go ahead and click, we maintain a high level of top-tier communication with the candidates. The goner of the days where you can get a candidate in and you can just say, do this, and you better get back to it. We have to be the ones outreaching out to these candidates, and our background investigation unit did a great job with that. Our captain, our lieutenants, when someone comes in, even just today, an officer said, you know, one thing that sold me was, everyone I've talked to at Montclair PD from start to finish has been extremely welcoming and professional, and that was one of the reasons, and we'll be introducing him tonight. He stated that this morning at a swearing-in, so. Ride-alongs, our lateral officers, they don't go on ride-alongs, our applicants, they don't go on ride-alongs, they already know what it's like to be a police officer. Every single one of them I've talked to said, the ride-along sold me as well. I went on a ride-along, and the way you guys talk to each other, you talk to the public, the way you speak about the job and the department was my selling point, because they're doing their homework when they're going on a ride-along, they're not just going to see what it's like to drive, they already know what it's like to be a police officer. So some results. Agencies that we've hired laterals from since this implementation of this program, Los Angeles sheriffs, Riverside sheriffs, San Diego sheriffs, LAPD, Alhambra PD, Blythe, Westmoreland, Hermosa Beach, one person was from Homeland Security and Covina PD with experience from others, or experience from both, and we actually had a lot of others that didn't make it through the background process as well. So from August 2023 to February 2024, we hired 10 lateral officers, some of these even before the bonus program because they saw the change of direction and the excitement at the PD. This brings a total year of experience of 47 years of experience among those 10 officers that we brought onboard, and it's already paying off for us. One of them is already promoted to police sergeant, after he became here with 16 years experience from the Sheriff's Department. He tested for our open sergeant's position, and he's out there as a sergeant right now. So we actually, you know, were able to recruit supervisor as well. Also, as mentioned before, we have two entry-level members in the police academy, and we continue to receive an influx of interest in that. So, next slide, please. Vacancies are diminishing quickly, we've had multiple applications received, we're now down to five vacancies from that first number that we discussed. Only one resignation since these efforts started, I think it's important to recognize that we were losing some employees to other agencies or retirement or other, you know, other venues in their life, and since we've began these efforts, we've only lost one, and this was a good resignation, not that there is a such thing, but this officer resigned so she could get her teaching credential and work with disabled children, and we provided her a great job here, and she's very appreciative, she'd welcome back at any time, but, you know, unfortunately, that's the career path you wanted to take from here. Open recruitment underway with interest for an experienced motor officer, we have an ad out for that right now, so we can start our motor program to help bring back, everyone knows the benefits of the motor program. So it's something else we're working on, next slide, please. Here's the result, we're swearing in four people at a time at the PD, so that's a good sign. All four people, all four of them had all their family members in there too, it was a packed house that day. Here's an example of our ad, we're getting some interest for motor officers, for laterals. Next slide, please. We knew that this wasn't enough, that we needed to, once we started getting bodies in, our team, we scheduled ourselves for a post-team building workshop or a TBW seminar in February that we already attended. City Manager Star and some city staff were there as well. It was facilitated by a post-instructor, Chief Lyle Martin from Bakersfield PD, retired, he's also the chief of the DA's office in Kern County. It was a three-day strategizing and training effort on setting some common goals so that we all come back with the same message and present to our people the, where we see ourselves going. So, next slide. So we established priorities for MPD moving forward, special assignment return, we talked about the set team, that's one of the priorities of our organization, motor officers, SRO officers, we already have one, SRO officer back working in the school again, after a time when we didn't have any. We know about the SED officer that we just approved last meeting, he's already doing some work for the Sheriff's Department, already taking some of our cases and running with them. We have an officer on our net team, inland regional narcotics task force officer, Montclair Police Officer Return, we used to have officers up at the Plaza, and with these increase in staff and these positions being filled, we'll be able to do that as well. And we're working on also a crime analyst position to assist the department and the detective bureau. Ancillary assignments are increasing as well, these are assignments that officers do in addition to their regulars, these aren't full-time assignments, but we have a mate team, which is major accident investigation team, arson investigators. One of our grants, we're purchasing some e-bikes so that we can do, you know, with the San Antonio Wash Project, with traffic enforcement at the mall during holiday times, it's bicycles, electric bicycles that they can do some enforcement on and ride around, and go to the community events and things like that. Honor guard, mobile field force, go ahead, the next one. We're having, we scheduled a department meeting, it's been multiple years, over a decade, I believe, since we had a department meeting where we do our photo, we provide praise, we neural expectations, we talk about our department mission statement, our accountability of each other, and we'll move on to the future of MPD. One of the things we're most proud of is our community outreach, I think we've multiplied community outreach in the last year. We, in the last nine or 10 months, enhanced our social media team, of course, the recruitment website as well, attended Black History Month event, open house extravaganza, extravaganza, country fair jamboree, national night outs, spectacular, gosh, the list goes on and on, trick-or-treat in our lobby, which is something we never, we tried, and it was a success, dashing of, everyone knows about dashing through Montclair, coffee with the cops, the list goes on and on. I have some pictures of some of those events to close out on, so. We had our career day just last week, the picture on the left, every officer, one thing that's great right now is every time we have something like this, I don't have to beg and ask people, people are willing to do it and they show up, and all these officers showed up, it was a great day. Gave a couple 45-minute presentations, all of us did, in the classes, PowerPoint presentations, and then met with people in the gym. As you can see, our national night out flyers, and next, our trick-or-treat in our lobby, it's something we tried this year, we were a little skeptical, but it actually ended up really great, a lot of people came by on Halloween, the actual Halloween day, our picture of national night out, you can scroll through the next one. Our toy drive at Costco, two of them, huge success, as you can see, some of us dressed up there on the, on the right there for Halloween, and, you know, members of the community that come in, it helps humanize the Police Department, so you're not coming into a surgeon or stale government building, it shows that we're, you know, human beings, and we got a lot of positive feedback from that. So, our awards recognition ceremonies, our Christmas party every year, our Christmas potluck every year, we hand out awards for Officer of the Year, annual achievement, and other achievements throughout the department. Families are invited to this, we have some FTOs there, holding up their stripes that they'll be sewn on their arm, very happy to, when they obtain that position, it's a very high-valued position at the Police Department, our Explorer Program on the right there with Lieutenant Michael. Promotion recognition at City Council meetings, professional staff vacancies that we mentioned earlier, Field Dispatch is fully staffed as of today, and we were quite, you know, a couple years ago, we were really low in staffing there, and largely because of Brenda's work in there, our dispatch supervisor, we were able to recruit a lot of those members, and we're fully staffed. Records will be fully staffed by April of 24, we're actually testing for that position tomorrow, front counter position, which will be filled, our cadets, the ongoing interest program, especially from our Explorer, crime analysts, four-to-five officer vacancies will be filled in a new round of recruitment to fill the rest of those vacancies coming up. We actually have, you know, only a certain number of officers that can train people, so they're maxed out right now, so as soon as they get those people out on the street by themselves, we'll be able to get another influx of trainees into them. And in the future, you know, with more, when we're fully staffed, we can explore additional assignments, some of our grant-funded positions, some of these positions are single positions that are funded by the Highway Patrol, or the state, or sometimes, you know, they're at no cost to the C, there's the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, that's highly successful, an auto theft cat task force, San Bernardino, auto theft task force, that's the SANCAT. We talked about the more motor officers, the better, we definitely have a traffic, traffic is a huge priority, we have a lot of traffic in Montclair. And again, it's been a team effort from everybody in this room, from staff at the PD to all of you, so we appreciate it. So at that, I'm trying to get to, if you would have gave me eight hours, I would have talked for eight hours about the Police Department, but I tried to get it all in.
I told you anybody at 6:15, but 6:25.
Yes.
So we have, I think we have one member that the public wants to speak, if I'm correct, but we'll open some comments from council first, and ask council leaders to make comments short, but, you know, Chief, and Ed, both of you, I want to commend you both. Ed, I know you and I sat late 2022 and kind of scratched our heads, you became aware of some issues in the Police Department, I heard it myself, and obviously, we've had a change of leadership there. Jason, you stepped in, I know, you know, obviously it's not yourself, but you have your leadership here, the leadership of your captain, lieutenants, obviously sergeants, and, you know, police officers themselves, and then, of course, our civilian staff too, but I really want to compliment you guys for what you guys have accomplished here. Everything you have in this presentation, I've been talking to you about, I've been talking the importance that this community expects, especially with the passage of the self-tax measure we had in 2020, our effort was not just, obviously, police, but making sure that we have more boots on the ground, and, you know, for example, we bring back the traffic division, we bring back the set team, the, or the team for our crime suppression, the crime suppression unit, it used to be called Crime Suppression Unit, now Street Enforcement Team now, bringing that back out, tackling issues, you know, one big issue, like, you know, I've just talked to you recently, is graffiti, I know that was a big issue that the Crime Suppression Unit dealt with 15 years ago. So I want to compliment you, because I didn't think you'll be down to five vacancies at this point. I know that Captain Ventura, I guess I owe him dinner in May, because he told me by May, there'll be, just, you know, we'll be back in full force again. I'll stop there, I don't know, any of my council colleagues have something to say, questions, just remember it's 6:27, but I'll start with Mayor Potem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question, it's a simple one, I think, and one comment. So my question was, when we talked about primary collision factors, can you clarify for me the unsafe turning movement, that somebody turning, like, from the wrong lane?
It's a very general section, it can be used for multitude of turning movements, so if someone were to turn right, and they run, they turn a right at a red light, and there's a collision, they turn left, and there's a collision, they turn and hit a parked car, so it's a general term, so when we determine what's at fault, if it's not speed, if it's not DUI, if it's not something else, there usually a turning movement is one of the main causes for a collision, and it's a very general section that's utilized for a multitude of unsafe turning movements, you know, lane change, a sudden U-turn, unsafe turning movements.
Anything that has to do with a turn?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And so that was my question, and my comment is, I wanted to give you, Chief Reed and your team, kudos for your outstanding community research, for all of the things that you have done over the last several months, to be transparent and to prove to the community that you're actually here to help them, and I just want you and the team to know how fantastic I think you are. That concludes my comment.
Okay, Councilmember Rue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, the issue about the police body cameras, I'm glad to see we're moving forward with that, I know that was a grant from Congressmember Norma Torres, and what she was able to do with that, it's most appreciated. One of the things, and I look at some of these statistics and compare them to other areas, and for a city of our size, where we have a major mall and a large car dealership area, these statistics, nobody wants even one crime, but they're good compared to some other areas, so I think by and large, we're doing a good job in the city. Thank you.
I'll have to add, the caveat is, we do report a lot more than some other jurisdictions do as well, you know, as somewhere, well, just, here's a business card, we do document more incidents.
No, I know we do that, that's the way we should do it.
Yes.
Right way, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Lopez.
Chief, thank you for your presentation and the diligence and the material that you prepared, it's rather succinct and detailed. Let me make a comment for members of the public, I know that there was some reservation expressed during an item on the agenda regarding the flock cameras and our approval of them, and that they might be used for, I guess, surveillance or other unintended uses. The fact that there are 78 returned stolen vehicles, I believe, was that in the 2023-24 time period, is proof that those cameras are indeed serving their purpose within the city limits, and they are being used for the intended purpose that police had stated they would be. So put all those reservations aside, that program is clearly working, so thank you for that. Few questions, cell phones are finally going to be up and running, how soon, did you say?
They're already in the hands, they've been in the hands, yes. IT's been tremendous on that, yes, you know, they're in the hands of all the officers right now.
I remember about two years ago, that was an issue, some officers expressed to me, because I know they didn't want to use their personal cell phones, and I didn't want them using that as well, since they're discoverable, so that's great.
Yeah, it's much more in-depth than going and buying one at Verizon, I mean, there's many, there's a lot of different features on the phone and security features, so yes, but, yes, they are, they've had them for months now.
And the recruitment webpage, I did look at it, it looked, I was really impressed by the high quality in the presentation, some of those videos look like short films, either at the Sundance Festival or out of Hollywood, they're pretty high-quality produced videos. A question regarding the arrest for vandalism. Now, I forgot what page that was on. You know the number offhand? Oh, I think 69, there you go. You're doing your job, you being the PD, but unfortunately, and correct me if I'm wrong, you arrest those individuals, you hand them over to the next appropriate authority to process them and whatnot, chances are, though, they're released the next day or the same day, correct?
Sometimes, depends on if it's misdemeanor, felony, adults, juveniles.
And I only bring that up because clearly, Montclair PD is doing a superb job at trying to catch vandals within the city, and unfortunately, external factors kind of undermine our own PD, so kudos to every single Montclair police officer doing your part with due diligence and with the intended purpose. Could you remind me, please, the primary collision, the one fatality, how recent was that?
How recent was, well, those stats, if I, I can't pull back my slide, but the most, those aren't including 2024 stats, they're including 22 and 23 stats.
That wouldn't happen to be an incident that happened on Kingsley-Montevista at all? No?
If it's more recent, no, I don't believe that was a fatal incident, unless you're speaking of a different one.
A resident that lives near me would get on me if I didn't bring up the situation, I believe that she was going to reach out to PD and share her Ring camera video regarding the street racing and the sideshow enforcement issue. There apparently is an individual or individuals around 2:00 AM at any given Thursday through Saturday doing donuts around San Bernardino, Montevista, PD can look into that, it'd be appreciated.
Yep, especially with the flock cameras, if they, that might be something, we can follow up with that and identify that vehicle.
And those Staccato 9mm, are we having to declare those as military equipment, given the new?
Firearms, sidearms are not.
That's good, and I'm glad, I'm not necessarily in favor of that law in the first place. Is the satellite office at the Plaza still there for us to use?
No. That office is no longer there, the one that was between Sears, and, no, that office is no longer there, but.
And regarding the set team, that was something that even before I got on council, I would hear, I believe it was Chief DeMoeit, that would mention the importance of it, and I guess it wasn't operational maybe towards the end of his tenure. I know for certain, Chief Avell's made that a big issue for him, that he wanted the set team back. I am really pleased to see that it has returned, it'll be fully functional under your leadership. The, I remember, gosh, even before I was on council, we did have a time where there was a hemorrhage and exodus of officers within the department going to other agencies, from Garden Grove to Anaheim, you name it, and I believe over a 10-year period, we've lost 30 to 40 officers, and that, that's, those are dollars that go with those officers, because we invest, I believe if my figures were correct, but approximately, from the time they're hired to the time they're actually on their own, maybe like $100,000 each officer, maybe more. And so to see that we are no longer having that problem is great, because we're, in the long run, we're obviously providing top-notch officers to provide safety for the residents, we're also saving them some money by avoiding having to expend money on new officers. So to all of the men and women in the Montclair Police Department, thank you for your continued service in everything you do. I've always said that Montclair Fire and Montclair PD are the best in the region, despite our size, and we are the little city that could, and as the chief alluded, this is a four-pronged effort, if you will, the foundation could not function without you, so thank you from the bottom of my heart, appreciate it, and thank you, Chief, for your time.
Councilmember Lopez. Martinez.
Councilman Lope Martinez, excuse me.
Thank you. Just two quick comments. One, I know you guys wrote a lot of reports, but one report for every seven calls, that's a lot. Six thousand, geez. That's impressive. I'm impressed.
Sometimes one of those incidents has thirty reports.
That makes sense. And then I haven't had a chance to look through your website, but there's some good stuff in here, some really good information that a prospective officer would like to see. So make sure it's in there. It's really good stuff. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, great. I think we have a member of the public that wants to speak or any members of the public want to speak under the public comment portion of this agenda or this meeting?
Yes, I have two cards actually from people who want to speak about safe routes to school. And then I have another one who wants to speak about ceasefire resolution.
Because of timing, I'm going to limit those to three minutes each for this meeting. So because we have to adjourn by a certain time and get ready for a regular city council meeting. There is a regular city council meeting at 7:00 PM. So if you wish to speak at that time, you can speak at the regular city council meeting. Go ahead, Andrea.
Okay, Jose Perez.
Come on up, Jose Perez. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, you can come out here if you wish and I'll.
Yeah.
Since we're speaking a little bit, good evening on council. Ms. Therese, Ben. Since we're speaking a little bit about the funding that was given from Ms. Norma Torres, Congresswoman, there was a part issued through the alleyways, which was actually paved. And I want to thank Ms. Ededia for taking care of those alleyways to get done. And I want to see if maybe Mr. Reed could actually implement, Chief Reed can actually implement a little bit more of patrolling due to the fact that alleyways are not made for cars being parked overnight. It creates uncertainty to residents and part of the community. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Vernon Middle School community. There's a couple of alleyways there, which is one is behind my house, which we have a lot of vehicles being parked there overnight. I would like to see a little bit of patrolling through there overnight and getting, make sure those cars are moved out the way. That's on behalf of the of the safe routes to school and also the paving that was done. And on behalf of the community through the safe routes to school, I wanted to speak a little bit about some construction issue that I wanted to see if maybe perhaps we can get done in front of my houses. Actually, I wanted to see if we can pave the front of the house. There's a little bit of unlevel paving at the beginning of the entrance. I tripped a couple of times when I actually walked my dog. It's not too safe. It's a little bit narrow. There's a couple of residents that are disabled. They actually avoid that crossing. Approximately six years ago, there was a death of a kid that got brutally ran over, killed. There was not enough patrolling of law enforcement during the beginning hours of school and also at the end hours of school. There's a lot of violations that are being occurred. I live across the street. I'm a resident of 5506 San Bernardino Street. There's still a lot of violations. There was stop signs installed, which helped a lot to reduce speed and violations. I would like to see a little bit of more patrolling, officers being more visible. That would make students feel safer. The north side paving area is being used more. It actually was not used by students because of the death of the young child. Now, I see them using it a little bit more often.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Your three minutes is up. Sorry.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to put some writing to the city clerk's office? Perhaps we can try and address some of your issues, but I apologize for the three minutes. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Yvette Miranda. Miranda?
Good evening. Hello to all the city council members, staff, the Montclair Police Department and the audience. My name is Yvette and I am here on behalf of City Foster School Community of Ontario, Montclair. I would like to thank the police department, specifically you, to the chief, for your presentation. It was very informative. We are involved in the community advocating for the safety of kids to and from school. We promote walking and bicycling to school through safety education and encouraging walking and bicycling to school. We have been able to speak to many, many parents when visiting schools in the Ontario, Montclair School District. In talking to parents in the city of Montclair, safety is a key concern in the community. Many parents would like to send their kids walking or bicycling to school but are very afraid that their kids will not be safe on the way to and back home. It's astonishing to see drivers not complying with the rules of driving. We do see the Montclair Police patrolling schools, but we would like to see more. We know that more officers have been hired and we applaud you for doing so, but parents still don't feel safe in regards to their children. They are really nervous standing on the corner waiting to get crossed when they walk their kids to school, afraid that they will get run over. In talking to parents, there have been many close calls when crossing the street too. We have been told at different schools and have witnessed crosscars being nearly brushed by cars. It's unbelievable, but believable. We would like to add that we have, that we commend the crossguards who do their absolute best in crossing the students safely to and from school. We appreciate the improvements in infrastructure. We see the immense number of stop signs with the LED flashing lights. And I can tell you that the community is extremely grateful for these. But we need more layers of safety. We have been able to observe firsthand the safety issues surrounding the school campuses in which we must take action. We would be very happy to work with your engineering department to relate the issues concerning the community. We have a relationship established with the city of Ontario with their engineering department and we would love to have that with the city of Montclair. I think we can work together to keep our kids safe. They are our future and their safety should be everyone's concern. I would like to add a little side note that I think, or I would suggest.
Pretty much, ma'am, your three minutes is up. Sorry. We have to get to the meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Next speaker, please.
All right, last one is Benjamin Wood.
Mr. Mayor, I'll wait till seven o'clock if you don't mind.
Seven o'clock, sounds good. All right, so no other speakers, Andrea? Just confirm. Again, Chief, and to the audience, you know, we're determined to make sure that the city is safe as possible. And we're going to make sure we do it with the resources we have. And I think we have a game plan here with our chief and his current leadership that we're going to enhance that safety. Doesn't mean it's a hundred percent. Doesn't mean that we have all the resources we need. But I do believe we are getting better. And I again appreciate your hard work and the hard work of your staff to pull this off in a short period of time. So hopefully then we can stabilize this department and make this department what it needs to be for what the people of the city can expect. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that works, we are adjourned.